Welcome to the Village Buchanan Board of Trustees regular meeting Tuesday, November 1st, 2022. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, next, we will approve the minutes of September 27th. Any corrections, comments? Favor to approve?
Aye.
Second first, right?
Second, Sean will be second, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the October 4th meeting. The regular, regular meeting. Any corrections, comments?
No.
Okay, and a motion to approve?
Second.
Who said first?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the minutes are approved. Okay, new business. We have, I'm going to open the public hearing regarding passenger vehicles turning left out of Greentown Road. So, that, a motion to open the public hearing. Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so what this is about, a couple of years ago, the board had passed legislation not to allow vehicles to turn left out of Greentown Road on to Blakely Avenue. We had a lot of heavy-duty commercial vehicles coming through, so the board just felt it was better to have them go out. Instead of going through a residential area, go out through the back on Louisa Street. So what's been asked now is that people at businesses in there are asking if the passenger vehicles alone can turn a left out of Greentown Road. So that's what we will be discussing and most likely approving this evening to allow the passenger vehicles. Any comments from the board?
No.
No?
I'm going to have signage for commercial vehicles.
Yes, we are going to put no left for commercial vehicles if the sign stays up.
What do you mean if the sign stays up?
The sign has been known to disappear, or come down, shall I say.
Well, let's try it again.
Let's try it again, so. Any comments from the floor on this item? No? Okay. So. I'm gonna make a motion to close the public hearing, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, I'm going to make a motion to install a sign stating no left turn for commercial vehicles coming out of Greentown Road. Passenger vehicles will be allowed to make a left. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. So the next is, I'm gonna make a motion to open the public hearing regarding removing the no right turn on red sign from Broadway to Blakely Avenue.
We missed one.
No?
Yeah.
Let's see.
Yeah, we're on C, yeah.
Yeah.
We already.
My mistake.
That's okay, that's okay. We've all had a, we've all had a crazy day, so yeah. And it's only Tuesday. Okay, so, so I made the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So what this is about, at the intersection of Blakely and Broadway, it's where the old Johnny Ritz was. If you're coming from Indian Point to Holtek, there's a sign there, it's pretty worn now, and it says no right on red. So, the board would like to remove that no turn on red sign, so that on a red light, if somebody's at the red light at that intersection, they can take a right. Any comments from the boards?
No, it's a great idea.
Yes. It's pretty straightforward.
Straightforward.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing if no one in the audience has a comment on that. No? Okay. All right, I'd like to make a motion to close that public hearing.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Normally on public hearings, I usually hold it over twice, but this is something pretty straightforward. So all in favor, aye.
Aye.
So I'm going to make a motion now to remove the no right turn on red sign from Broadway to Blakely Avenue. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's settled. The next is about a filming permit for American Pickers. So Marcus, do you have any updates for us on, on the American Picker filming permit?
Uh, no, we discussed it at the last workshop, then moving forward to a certain date, they're gonna provide the fee, which is $2,500, so one-day shoot. They're gonna be on private property the whole time, if I want to interfere with any traffic, or pedestrian, pedestrian people walking around. So, I've talked to the police chief, we have no issues with it, so the idea is to approve it, and it'll be taking place pretty soon.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Marcus, and Shane, our police chief is with us this evening, and also Andy, Andy Roush is our fire chief, he's here with us this evening, thank you. Okay, so, on a motion to approve the filming permit for American Pickers.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
The next, we're gonna have to have a little bit of a discussion on this, is a motion to, I'm not making motion yet, but this just is a discussion on a peddler's permit for sunrun. So I need to have direction from the board, what days, what hours? Cindy, the other company that got approved, what, what was, what did we approve them for?
12:00 PM to 6:00 PM, Monday to Saturday, but not more than two times a week.
Okay. And this company is asking for?
One person. For the whole year. He's gonna pay the.
Okay. All right.
From 10:00 AM to 7:00, to 7:00 PM, Monday to Saturday.
Okay. What's the board's thoughts on that? I, we did discuss it a little bit at our workshop, and I think.
So he, he wants 10:00 AM, or is it 12:00 PM?
10:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Okay.
I think we were kind of in agreement where we didn't want him in here, like, during dinnertime, and hours, like, you know, it's daylight savings now, it's gonna be getting dark. You know, a lot of people are a little leery about, you know, answering the door at, you know, 6 o'clock at night, you know, when it's darker out, and, you know, around dinnertime. So I think, you know, maybe give him till 5 o'clock?
Or dusk, you know?
Whatever, you know? But I, I think 7 o'clock is now.
A little too late, yeah, yeah. Is 10:00 AM okay?
I'm fine with that.
Do you guys wanna start at noon?
It's fine.
I'm fine with 10:00.
10:00, okay, all right. 10:00 AM till 5:00 PM?
Yeah, I think that's fair enough.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Board agree?
But any day? You can do.
Monday through Saturday, I would say, right?
Yeah, no Sundays. I don't think, you know, that's, they have six days, that's plenty of time to, to get through the village. Okay, um. No other comments on that? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the peddler's permit for sunrun with the hours of 10:00 to 5:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. And I have a second?
Second.
On a question? Holidays?
He brings up a good point, I would say no, no holidays.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And the next is, we, for quite a while, used the Town of Cortland's assessor, which was Tom Wakens, and unfortunately, he had passed this year. Marcus has found someone else to be a part-time assessor. So Marcus, if you, you know, you wanna discuss what, what an assessor does, and, and why we need an assessor?
Oh, sure, the assessor needs to review all the entire improvements to properties throughout the village, and then calculate the new assessment. That assessment is then provided to the clerk, she act, then we send out notification to all the residents, that, who are affected by increasing the assessment. And then those people can come in and grieve, or meet with the assessor and go over their assessment changes. There's a taxable status state that goes out first, then that was the information sent out to all the individuals. Then this agreements night, the assessor actually attends agreements night, listens to any grievances, and then the agreements board then approves the final assessment that goes, that goes to the next tax row to, for payment of taxes. So, Tom Wakens, we've used him for some time, it was the individual, the benefit was that he was also local. So what I did was, I actually talked to Villager Croton, he, for his time, was also to Villager Croton's assessor. Villager Croton hired this individual as well, at more, on an actual part-time basis, they actually paying him $30,000 a year to be the part-time assessor for the village of Croton. I perceive this will be maybe a couple of thousand for the village, he's gonna meet with the building inspector, meet with the Cindy, go over the assessment, finalize the numbers, review the numbers, go to grievance night, and that's about it. So it's only a couple of hours a year that has to happen, that's why we call it a part-time assessor. So it's minimal, we have enough money to budget to cover this, and what's good about it is, he's also the Villager Croton assessor, so when he's in the area, he'll be working with us as well. And he's also the full-time assessor for the village of Moncristo, village of town of Moncristo, and I gave the board a copy of the resume.
Okay.
So, time is a little bit of the essence, because we have to get a role ready in the next couple of months, and that we provide the information, we can review it, and we can move forward. So, hopefully the board will approve him, so we can start sending documentations as of tomorrow, so we can start working on the assessment role.
Okay, good, thank you, thank you for the review. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Roger D. Miller as part-time assessor at a rate of $175 per hour, starting tomorrow, which is November 2nd. Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
On a question?
Yep. When exactly did we learn, you know, that, that this was a requirement, that this was a need, and who else did we interview for this?
Well, the Villager Croton took the lead role, we were trying to work together, and they actually interviewed a couple of assessors, and they were keeping updated how they went through the process. So we wanted to piggyback on what they're trying to do, so when Tom passed away, we started working with the Villager Croton right away.
He was also the Town of Portland assessor.
Was that? Yes. There, I don't know if they are going to the process, I don't know if they hired somebody finally, I know they had an interim person, they haven't finalized hiring anybody yet.
So we didn't interview, we didn't, we didn't look for anybody else?
No, I actually went with the Villager Croton, because they actually have a lot, much bigger need that we have, and that's why we hired Tom. But Tom was really the part-time assessor for many more, many more years before that, so we've always been working with the Villager Croton for years doing this.
And you find him to be reputable?
Oh, very, 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 very highly respected, I know a couple of assessors, I actually talked, I actually talked to the assessors, to have the committee of assessors, and I talked to the chairperson, and he, they, they told me he was highly, highly skilled, highly, highly recommended. And like I said, it's a couple of hours a year, it's not, it's not gonna be a lot of money at all.
I'm fine with it, I just wish we had, you know, a little more notice, that's all. We had a workshop last week, and it would have been helpful if we, you know.
I just found out they hired this, they hired him right after.
Well, even if we heard that there was a need for this, we, you know, it's kind of blindsided that it was on the.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you guys knew that Tom passed away.
No, why?
Okay.
So, I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, information from officers and departments, justice report for, let's see, October, $12,109. Also, October is $5,500. Received and filed, police report is for September 2022. I'll, I'll just give a quick overview, moving summons, 39 total calls, 155 parking summons, 22 received and filed, highway report, household garbage, 42 tons, bulk and dumpsters, 15 tons, leaves, 3.31 tons. Oh, and then we had a, we had to borrow the Town of Cortland truck, we had, we had a little problem with one of our trucks, and then it was 37 tons, and bulk was six at that point, and dumpsters were five tons, metal, 3.58 tons, chipping, 26 yards, e-waste, 21 TVs, and eight monitors. And they have been, they have been very busy, now the, the leaf vac and all that other stuff is coming. They closed up the pool, so it's been busy, busy, busy for the highway department. Waste water plant, report for September 2022, wastewater, 6,515,000 gallons, sludge, 86,000 gallons. Okay, good. Building departments. I see you guys have been busy. Yeah, yeah, there's always a lot going on. Okay, good. Lot of COs, lot of building permits issued. All right, thank you. Buchanan engine, there were, for September, seven EMS assists, other emergencies, four, two mutual aid, and two hazmat. Thank you. Prosecutor's report, October 2022. That's received and filed. And attorney's report, Stephanie, what do you have for us this evening?
Everything I have, there's three or four things is in executive session, please.
Okay. All right, we can do that. Administrators report, what do you have for us, Marcus?
Uh, just two quick things, a while back, the village board agreed to replace the boiler at village hall, we hired a engineer to do that, so we actually had a couple of meetings. Just getting an update, he actually filed with Con Edison for the application to change over the gas. We did that with Con Edison last week, last Friday, in fact, Con Edison requires a Con Edison certified installer. So we actually, the engineer found somebody to do that for us, which actually is gonna run the pipe from the tap to the, to the village hall. The price was pretty good, $37.55 to run the pipe all the way across, we still need to.
So that's gonna come from Tate Avenue?
From Tate Avenue to the building.
Size, what size was that, four inch?
It's a one-inch, one-inch.
One-inch, high pressure.
One, and high pressure, so that's gonna be $37.55 to put that in. They, they don't do the, they don't do the trenching or the backfill, so the engineer is actually looking for a couple, a couple of practical contractors to do that. They'll just do the pipe, they won't dig the trench, and they will not backfill, so we need a separate contractor to do that.
And who puts the regular around, they're gonna do all that, Con Edison's gonna do all that, right?
That would be, that would be the plumber on the inside when they do the boiler, when I, that's gonna go actually form a bit out, but we're trying to get all the other pieces done together to do that. So we're getting surprised to do the trenching and the backfill, working on that still. We also got this, we have to do asbestos test, testing, we got a proposal for that, it's $1,000 to do asbestos, then hopefully, keep my fingers crossed, there's not too much asbestos. And then the final thing, we actually had a meeting today to go over the final specification and dates for the bid, to go out the bid, and the idea is to get a bid award to the village for the December meeting on the workshop, to have a recommendation to you by then, and then hopefully, then you award the bid at the January meeting. And the idea is to do the installation in April, to get everything replaced in April when the TV season's over. So I'll get you more details if you want through the process, and when the bid goes out, so we'll at least move forward in that process.
On that, Marcus?
Yes.
Who's giving the backfill specifications?
Con Edison.
Con Edison will give the specifications to the contractor, so we're gonna include that in the bid.
That, we're waiting to see what the prices come in for the, for the trenching and backfill, but if that's below our bidding limits, then we just have required to get a couple of proposals. So we actually reached out to three separate contractors to, to get proposals from them.
So they're gonna tell us what kind of, what we need to use to backfill, because there's different substrates to.
Correct, 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 so we'll be working on that with Con Edison, and in fact, for the, for the plumber, even though we got a price of $37.55, supposedly, we're waiting for Con Edison to give us a proposal as well, so at least we have Con Edison's proposal and a plumber's proposal, to see what's the best option.
Con Edison didn't offer you a certain linear footage?
Not for, not for commercial, they, they stop at the property line, so we talked, we had that discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I thought maybe they would help you out a little bit.
Yeah.
I mean, they do 100 feet per residential.
Yes, that's correct.
Maybe they would help you out.
That's what I was hoping to, but they wanted that for us, yes. But the good part about it is, they haven't finished doing Tate Avenue, so we're waiting for them to tap, so that will be, can do Tate Avenue once, so hopefully we'll get that done. If we get the prices for the trenching, and we get the plumber, hopefully we wanna get that done first, and get that done before the winter sets in, that way we can settle, and then we'll be ready to do the boiler for next year. So that's what the plan is so far at that point.
So you're gonna excavate?
Yes, no, go ahead.
You're gonna do the tap and do the excavation?
Correct.
In, before the winter?
Correct, that's what we're trying to do. Yes, exactly.
So they're not gonna do the paving this year?
It'll be in the spring.
Okay, all right.
Yes, so the timing works out good, but then we'll have to tap in.
Yeah.
And we'll be, and they'll be ready to rock and roll to, to the pavement in the springtime. Okay?
And what about the old oil tank, what's?
That we talked about, we talked about, maybe we might be able to keep it in place, so we, yes, so I don't know if you wanna talk about that a little bit? Are you, you wanna talk about the process for that, or? Yeah.
Basically, we're in contact with one company at a peak scale, and they're gonna come in, they're gonna give us a price on cleaning the tank, soil samples, filling through the tank, making sure there's no leaks, and either fill it with K-Crete or bentonite, George referred to bentonite, it's a lot more money, don't need to have bentonite, K-Crete's more than sufficient. And again, normally I'd want it removed, but unfortunately, it goes under the side of the building and the generator, and the tank, and the sidewalk, so it's a lot of destruction on the side of the building to remove it.
They get undermined the generator.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't want to disturb any of that.
Yeah.
So, so we're hoping to leave it in place and get a price on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
From him.
Yeah, so a couple of little pieces still missing, but we're moving forward with that. And the good thing, the, the engineer says that the boilers that we're talking about replacing are in probably in stock, so we have to have a supply chain issue, so that they can be installed pretty quickly. So we're moving forward on that, so. That's on the, on the boiler for the village, wanna give you an update too, I know we brought up a couple of times, Anthony and Theresa, you brought up too, I got a call from Theresa a couple, a couple of days ago. Con Edison was working on Lindsay, and, and Route 9A with the poles, that was a storm hardening program, they're gonna go on, they say went from Pete's Hill all the way down to Montrose. Con Edison said they finished their work just yesterday, so now they have notified yesterday Verizon Cable Bridge to move their lines over. So that's, they may take a month or two for them to move their lines over, and then double woods will come out, and the project will be done. So, I, I told them about the frustration that everybody's been having, and they said, well, try to be patient with this, with storm hardening, we were placing all those poles with new poles, that way it can withstand storms, so then they gave me the whole story about that, and we're pretty close to being done, and we actually got in contact with the local foreman who's working on the job. I finally got in contact with him, and he understands the situation, and he said that he would be on top of it, he gave me his cell phone number, and he said he's gonna stay on top of it. Huh? Yes, exactly.
He called me.
Exactly, but I spoke to him about it too, so he said, I'll stay on top of it, I know what the issues are, and if you have any problems, let me know, and I'll keep you updated, so.
Yeah, that just seemed to go on and on, and then they were here for like, three months, and then they were gone, and then they were here, it was, it was the craziest thing, yeah. All right, good, thank God.
Hopefully that'll be done pretty soon.
Yeah, because there was a question about the site distance coming out of Catherine Street.
Yep, that's the double woods, he said he understood it, took a picture of it, he's gonna work with engineering company, engineers to see if they can move that as well.
There's three poles there.
Yes.
Yeah, three poles.
And he says he went wide, took a picture of it, he said he doesn't understand his total problem, so at least we got someone who's local and understands the situation.
Yeah, no, that's good.
So you see, you see most of the poles cut up to where, you'll see that the power's been switched, and all the poles have been cut almost in half. All right, so that's the update on that.
Thanks for following up on that.
Thanks, Mark.
Well, thanks for the call, I ran straight at them, I talked to the, I talked to the guys there, and I got that gentleman's phone number, so we'll work that for you.
Good, good, thank you. Okay. All right, trustees report, let's start with Sean.
Thank you. Last month, we spoke about, I should say last month, the last workshop meeting, we talked about Marcus having the extension, and we talked about the pay scales that were listed on the website. I felt were extremely low, starting at $70,000, I don't think we've paid an administrator $70,000 in decades. So my suggestion was, was to increase it or remove it, and through a little research, there has to be a pay scale listed in accordance with the extension. So my, instead of removing it and keeping it at 70,000, I think we should place 120 to 150,000. Our code does not give a pay scale, our, our fee matrix does not give a pay scale, and what our code says is "The village administrator shall receive such compensation and benefits as the board of trustees shall fix." So I'd just like to have the, the scale on the website to say 120 to 150, instead of 70 to 100, I think it is. So, I, I don't think we need a resolution for it, because it's not a code change, there's no governing document that would, we would be superseding. It's more or less just a clerical issue based on the extension paperwork, and to give a more true, accurate pay scale to any, anybody who would like to come to the village.
What, I, off the top of my head, I just, I can't remember, what, what is your salary?
106.
Okay. So considering that the current administrator is at 106, I think the scale should start at the 106.
Okay, say 106 to 130.
Okay.
That's fine. Anything above 70 would be beneficial, because I don't think we've actually hired anybody below 70,000, and maybe the laborer, but that's about it. That was in, that was in 2009, 2009, so, that's a little outdated. And, okay.
Yeah.
Also, the other day, we all received a letter from the Westchester Putnam Building Trades Council, President Edward Doyle. He says, "I'm writing to you as the president of Building and Construction Trades Council of Westchester and Putnam Counties, representing more than 40,000 hard-working men and women in those respective areas, many of whom reside in the Village Buchanan and the Henry Hudson School District. I would like to express my deep concern and disappointment regarding the negative reaction and approach to the solar battery storage facility proposal that has come before you. Jupiter Powers' concept for $125 million investment that would have virtually no negative impacts while providing $80,000 in new tax revenue for the village, and far more for the Henry Hudson School District, is found money for our village and schools. For this reason alone, the proposal should not be dismissed, especially considering the gap created by closing of Indian Point. The company's preferred location is an unused parking lot at the Certain Teed Wallboard Plant, should be a no-brainer. It's an industrial site that with a critically important use, that, and is not going away, sorry. The proposed battery storage building would not be visible off-site, it would employ only a few skilled workers to monitor and maintain it, and have no traffic impact. An alternate location on the east side of Broadway, as suggested, would also work well, but after Jupiter negotiated to acquire that property, that option is now also being nixed. Buchanan will be living with decommissioning of Indian Point for at least the next 20 years. The suggestion being put forth by the village that townhomes be built on property adjacent to the nuclear plant is not realistic. The village and the school district need new ratables ASAP, and Jupiter offers a viable, super-low-impact use that generates significant new tax revenue. The facility can be run safely, quietly, and is aligned with the state's fossil-free energy planning goals. Finally, an important factor for our union members is Jupiter's pledge to use 100% union labor to build the facility, which would provide good-paying jobs and another reinvestment back into the community and its tax base. No question, the proposal deserves to be carefully renewed, I'll review, sorry, but it should not be rejected as unsustainable for Buchanan now or in the future. The connection to the state's power grid is literally next door, we should let Jupiter make good use of it. So, the main reason why I wanted to read that, and it's signed Edward Doyle, President, is a lot of times, union members who are in our area, a lot of times, it's hard for them to see that their leaders are act, that their leaders are actually lobbying village officials or government officials that, for projects that they feel could benefit them. I know, one of my friends, Tom Carey, who was in this position, he had also lobbied for many different projects in many different communities, used to see him on TV all the time. I don't know where he stands on this, but he's no longer the, the president, but I just wanna let all the union members know that, hey, your people are out there, your people are reaching out, your people are trying to get you jobs, to keep you employed, and to keep you living in the community for which you've been accustomed, so that's, that's why I wanted to read that. Also, there was a, an email that you sent out, Mayor, the other day about a labor issue at the plant, I know I'm not allowed to discuss it. However, there was a flyer that was sent out that had all of our email addresses on it, all of our positions, as well as the village phone number, and it had asked anybody to, to contact us at the village, I didn't receive any emails, I don't know if the village hall received any phones, phone numbers, but I was wondering if you could just go over the issue and how it was remedied, and if there's any other issues along those lines.
The issue was, Holtek has. The issue was, um, Holtech has been using a local, um, concrete company. That, uh, the Union four fifty-six, um, is, it's a, a, a union, uh, uh, shop. I guess there was some type of a issue with the concrete. So this is my understanding of everything. There was some type of an issue with the concrete. So. Um, my understanding is Holtech then went to Brewster. And there's also another, uh, Teamster, uh, shop there. Um, they did not want to, uh, to come to deliver it, um, for the ca, for the casts. That's what basically it was for. It was the, the cement for the cast. So my understanding is at that point, Holtech went out to a non-union, uh, organization and that's where, um, the union. Got upset and, you know, understandably so. And, uh, so that's what happened. That's, I, I understand they were there pretty early in the morning handing out the flyers. I also understand there was a big rat that was deployed. So there was a rat there and I think, I don't think it was all day. I think it was until early, early, uh. Late morning or early afternoon. Um, I know they, they came out to show their displeasure with, uh, that Holtech was not uni, using, uh, union people. That's my understanding of it all.
Thanks. Thanks. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Steve, what do you have for us?
Yeah, I don't have too much, uh, you know, last couple of months I've been, you know, uh, thanking both the police and fire departments and. Once again, I'm gonna do that, uh, you know, last night they, both departments did a fantastic job with Halloween. So I thank both of them. You know, if anybody wants to see how, you know, wonderful the village is and, you know, why we're here working to, to make sure it, it strives and, and continues. All you have to do is, uh, go out one Halloween night and go on one of the village streets. So I thank them both. That's all.
Thank you, Steve. Dan, what do you have for us?
I just want to know if we could, uh, revisit the, um, the issue with the vacant house on Bannon Avenue. I know I've brought it up before in the past, you know, it's. We were on a timeline, so. But it's, uh, you know, it's just an eyesore. Um, so I, I just wanted to know if we could revisit that again and see where we are with that. Um, and just a reminder that, um, we have election day on Tuesday. And we also have Veterans Day coming up. So, um, remember to thank a vet and Sean, thank you for your service and Sean serve. That's all I had.
Thanks, Dan. Trustee Capicotti, what do you have for us this evening?
I don't have much. Uh, just a great night last night. I was out trick or treating with my kids and it was very safe. Thank you, Shane and all your, your police officers. The fire department was out there. They showed good force. Uh, it was, uh, it was nice to see that we had a great turnout in Buchanan. It was really, uh, really something. Uh, uh, just to touch on what Sean was talking about with, uh, President Doyle. Um, I'm a union man, thirty years in the union and I, I, I live and die by the union. But I have an obligation to the Village of Buchanan. And as that obligation is, is that. You know, it's gonna take one year to put up those Butler buildings for that. Uh, battery storage. And how many workers are actually gonna be at that facility after? Edward Doyle didn't say that, did he?
No, he did. He said it's only gonna be manned by a couple.
Okay. So just like your point, just to, not your point, but. Just like this guaranteed union, Holtech is doing exactly what could possibly happen there as well. Going to a non-union concrete company, everything is guaranteed at the beginning to get their foot in the door. But nothing's guaranteed forever. If we allow this to go in. For a one-year union job, we're stuck with it for sixty years. And that property is a valuable piece of property. For eighty thousand dollars, I can't see that happening. And as a union man, I am obligated to the village to make the right decision for this community. And that's the way I feel. And I, I just feel like I needed to say that because this is my responsibility. So I have to say.
You are correct. You took an oath for the Village of Buchanan and, you know, you will have a dual situation here, Anthony, but, um. And, and I just want to make it clear, there's no one on the board who is anti-union. Um, we understand. That jobs are important for our union people. The union people built this country. So, but what I'd like to also say about that is, um, I was quite interested in Mr. Doyle's letter. Um, cause it wasn't exactly factual. And for someone who does not live in this community or pay taxes. For him to basically. Poo poo our little village. I, I think that that was where I got upset a little bit. And, um, you know, we all have a vision. This board's number one responsibility is for the safety and security of its residents. That's our number one job. Yes, we pass legislation. Yes, we do this, but our number one job is safety and security. So, you know, we've had this discussion before, um, with this, uh, this battery storage. I felt and most of the board felt that it wasn't in the best interest of the village. We thought that, you know, we could do something better for the village. And, um. I just don't see, you know, for the year project and then only having three people employed there. You know, we lost a phenomenal, uh, corporate neighbor. Uh, who paid a lot of money for the village taxes, for the town, for the schools. Uh, great corporate neighbor would donate and do a lot of things for our community. They not only donated to us, a lot of organizations around. But I just, I, I just don't see where that's a benefit to the village. And we've had this discussion before. And that it would not be visible off of Broadway. That's fine. You know, uh, we do have a vision. Uh, we are doing rezoning the property. We've had that discussion too. We're doing the LWRP. Local waterfront re- revitalization. And for him to say townhouses, well. That's not in those sixty acres. If we can get those sixty acres from Holtech. Obviously he misunderstood. We're looking at mixed development. All up and down the Hudson River, there is no more industrial. As you see the different communities, Austin, go down by their train station. See how beautiful the development they did there. Go down to Tarrytown, go down to Yonkers. You know, I think, you know, to vision this, to do something positive, to move the village forward, to get in, in, just to, you know, benefit for the village. Putting up concrete buildings. I, I just, you know, I, I just don't think that's, that's the best use of the property. And that was when we've started zoning. It was the best and highest use for that property. So concrete buildings with battery storage, lithium ion batteries. I, I just, I, that's my personal opinion and obviously the board had made the decision that they were, they were done that. With that, they weren't interested in that. We're looking at other things. And also speaking now to, uh, Certain Teed. Uh, it's not, and, and Stephanie, you've had conversations with their attorney too, I know. And it's just. Like it's, you know, if they could have gotten it there, made more money, fine, but it's not, it's not what their goal is for their property. They were approached. They said, okay, you know, if we can do it, fine. If not, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna worry about that. So, um, yeah, I just, I thought that was an interesting letter and, you know, like I said, everyone has a right to their opinion. Uh, you know, doesn't matter if you're a resident here or taxpayer, you absolutely have a right to your opinion. The other thing, um, moving on to Buchanan Day, I would like to thank. The fire department who cooked our hot dogs and hamburgers, the police department for giving out ice cream. The beautification committee was there, the St. Patrick's, uh, committee was there, parade committee. We are having a St. Patrick's Day parade party this year. So, um, and parade. And I'd like to thank all the residents who came. And I'd also like to thank Holtech who sponsored the day before Entergy would sponsor it and Holtech now has agreed to sponsor our Buchanan Day. The Halloween party on Saturday, I'd like to thank Nancy, uh, Recreation Supervisor. She did a great job as always. The kids had a great time, got lots of candy. And all those who set up tables. So it's always a fun event. And also I'd like to also echo what everyone said, uh, the police and the fire department out on Halloween. You know, that, that's makes us a very special community. The community works together, comes together and it's always good to see the. You know, people out patrolling the streets, protecting the citizens. And the children. And so Anthony, I have a question for you. What did you dress up as yesterday?
I didn't dress up yesterday, but I went to a Halloween party and I was the Joker.
Okay, good.
I just got the green stuff out of my hair finally.
I'm checking that. Okay, good. Alright, uh, any comments? Yes, sir.
If I actually remember something, I just want to let the public know and the village board. I've been watching the local news and everybody's seen Channel twelve news recently. There have been a lot of break-ins in cars where people leave their key fob. And then people just, they unlocked and people just walked in, pressed the button and take off with people's cars. So, so just point out that if you have a key fob, do not leave it in your car. Number one. Number two, the more scariest one I've seen was at least two cars that left the key fob in the car. I mean, excuse me, they left the car unlocked. They left the garage door opener in the car, in the house, in the car. They went in, they went into the house. Thank God, nothing happened, but they stole the keys anyway and ran away with the cars. So. Please do not leave your garage door open in the car. Do not leave your key fob in the car. Remember the old days when I had to turn the key? You could leave it in the car, but not anymore. First upon they take off with it. So just want to put that notice out there. I think there were about eight or nine of them in Lower Westchester. Uh, thank God it's down there so far, but please be careful about that.
Well, I see things, peak scale. I see different things, people going through cars. You, you see.
What happened in Hastings, Irvington, Dobbs Ferry and Greenberg.
Yep. They, they, they hit York, they hit Furpland quite often with.
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so please, um, you know, it's, I've had my car, I left my car unlocked one day, but then they just went through my car, but just be careful.
Uh, it's not the community of fifty years ago, is it? You know, things are changing.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no, no, that's fine. Alright, comments from the floor? Do we have any comments from the floor? And we see Eileen absinng her person.
Anthony, I want to thank you for, wow.
Uh, you got it now, working.
Oh, geez. Yeah, and you guys, you can't hear. You don't have your microphone in front of you. And Marcus, you were louder when you were talking to the board members, but we, I couldn't really hear you that well. But Anthony, I want to thank you for making the statement that you did regarding unions, pros and cons. I do appreciate that. Um, who cleans up the sidewalk across from the Wick building that has just been installed? There is litter all over the place. I mean, it's disgusting.
Alright.
I think the gas station might go to a certain degree.
Yeah, it's Con Edison after that.
Yeah, it is just pitiful.
Can I, we're set to state.
Do you?
No, it's the adjacent property owner, which would be Con Edison. I think that's all Con Edison. I'll give him a call tomorrow.
Is there a room to put a, uh, not that they'll do it, but is there room to put a garbage can there somewhere?
It's just the brick coming out of cars and roads.
Yep.
It's either that or the people walking on the sidewalk, just dropping the litter. It was.
Thanks for letting me know.
Yeah, um. Danny, do you have anything from the school?
No, just that, um, you know, they had put, they had met as a, as a school board and put some things into play to. You know, rest assured that it wasn't gonna happen again. They only had one more home game after that. And they did put restrictions on the, uh, the playground and also on, uh, unattended younger. Um, children. Children being.
Supervised.
Yeah, unsupervised, correct. That was pretty much what I got from Joe.
Okay, well, I did sign up for the, uh, notifications.
Yep.
And I encourage all parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, anybody who has a child in this district. To put your name on that email because the email I did receive was after. From Joe Hawk Rider and it was a prank. This was in the high school, what, two weeks ago? I don't know what, I don't know what the prank was because I wasn't signed up quick enough, but.
Supposedly that it was just a suspicious package and they called the Westchester Bomb Squad in and. Basically, you know, did a clean sweep.
Alright, was that sent out to as one of those emails?
There was a communication, yes, because as a parent, as a parent, we did get it.
Okay, but if you're not a parent, will you get it if even if you sign up?
If you are signed into that portal now, you should be getting any kind of notification.
Okay, I signed in the day after he.
At least that's what Joe told me, so.
Okay, so I do encourage parents, grandparents, especially because if, and also to. Be aware of the board meetings that are on, uh, online on YouTube because. Whatever you don't want in your school, it's coming to your school very quickly. Um, and you better be aware of it so that, uh, we can make a statement about it. Um, and, uh, this is going down into the kindergarten and first and second, third, fourth, fifth grades. So if there's something that you don't like or something that you have a, uh, you're, you find offensive. And you want to opt your child out of, I suggest that you pay attention to the school board. Meetings and, um, and get in contact with the board members. They have emails also. So, um, that's just a strong, strong suggestion because things are changing more rapidly than you can imagine. Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony.
I would just like to say that, uh, Eileen brings up a very good point. You should be in tune with what is going on in your school district. It's your tax dollars, whether you have a child in the district or not. It's your tax dollars that are being funded to help that school that, that's our school district run. And if you have a disagreement about something, about what's being taught in our curriculum or the way things are being handled in whatever capacity. You have that right. And we have two board members that sit on the school board that live right within the village. So, and I know both of them are very good listeners. So, thank you, Eileen.
Good point, Dan, Eileen. Um, the only other, any other comments from the floor? No. Uh, Veterans Day. Uh, the town will be having a ceremony at the Muriel Marabito Center. I believe it's one o'clock, Sean.
Yeah, flyer's right here.
I'm sorry, yeah.
One o'clock.
One o'clock, alright.
Friday, November eleventh, yep. One o'clock.
One day instead. Okay, good. Alright, if there's no other comments, I'd like to, uh, make a motion. To go into executive session to discuss contractual and legal matters. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.